All set?
Yep.
All right, we're gonna open the Monday, January 22nd, 2018 meeting at 6:31. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get to resident comments, I just want to make an announcement. As a public service announcement, be advised that the Fire Chief has been placed on administrative leave pending an investigation to be concluded on February 12th. For immediate assistance, please reach out to Assistant Chief, Assistant Fire Chief Kurt Rochella through dispatch. And now for resident comments. Tracy, you wanted to talk about Winterfest?
Just wanted to let the Board know, as well as anyone watching, that this Sunday, the 28th, from 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock up at VZ Memorial Park, the Activities Committee will be sponsoring the Winter Festival. The Bagnall School Chorus will be singing at 1:00 PM, and there will be a program on Owls at 2 o'clock. So it's a good time for the community to get together and get out of their house. Sometimes there's sliding, but it doesn't look like there'll be a lot of snow this time around.
Not now.
So we'll be primarily inside. So, thank you.
This Saturday?
This Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday, the 28th, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you borrow some snow from Bradford?
I don't think they're gonna have enough snow either.
They're not gonna have much snow either.
Well, they can make it, though.
Yeah, not if it's not cold enough. All right, moving on to warrants. I'll read the warrants for tonight. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-29 in the amount of $143,601.75.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-29 in the amount of $729,191.98.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Breaks down, please.
Yes, and please bear with me tonight, I'm not feeling very well. Town bills, $94,000 and change. The Whittier assessment, $333,000. The light department bills are $186,000. Water and sewer, about $15,000. The wastewater charges to Haverhill is $32,000. Snow and ice, $29,000. Chapter 90 work, $35,000, and about $4,000 for payroll withholdings.
How much is the snow and ice again?
Snow and ice, $29,000.
What does that do to the budget?
We are... Sorry, bear with me. 74% through the budget.
25% through the winter.
Yes, halfway. We're halfway through meteorological winter.
So we gotta hope for warm weather and rain?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes. Okay.
Next, moving on to appointment of Darcy Lepore of Amesbury as a library director effective January 22nd, 2018, with a salary of $62,200. Ms. Lepore has been serving as an interim director since August 1st, 2017. Can you go up to the podium? Yep, please.
Hi.
So how's it been going since the interim appointment last summer?
I think it's been going pretty well.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
You been making any changes over there, or any adjustments, or has it just been kind of status, keeping the ship going straight?
Yeah, for now, it's just been, I've been growing with the job and getting used to it, for now.
Now you feel comfortable taking charge full-time?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, I do.
Anybody have any questions? Bill?
I've got a couple. What took them so long? This is August, they made your interim, so they've been looking August, September, October, November, December, January?
I don't know, but they voted, so here I am. Hey.
I think that they opened the position up and considered external candidates, but then they decided to go with an internal candidate. So I think that was part of the issue, is that they were doing their search.
Oh, I, obvious, that's obvious to me, they picked the internal candidate, I'm just wondering, seven months? Wow, okay.
Yeah, can't speak for them.
I think it was...
Nah, I, nobody can speak for them, I know.
Speak for myself. No, I can just speak for myself, that's what I mean.
Lisa? Yeah, you set, all set?
Yeah.
Lisa?
It was closed and reopened again, right, Laurel?
Yes.
So there were two searches over that time?
We, we want to do due diligence. Laurel Palkowski, library trustee, we want to do due diligence and make sure that, I mean, Darcy has worked in the library, we want to make sure that they were, that we had done for the town, put it out there and see if there were any other candidates that could serve. And you were on the committee.
Can you go up to the podium, please, so we can hear you? Yeah, please.
Hi, Jamie Caloris, I'm a library trustee. So I would just speak on Laurel's kind of note there. I was on the search committee for the new director, and I was actually in charge of receiving all of the resumes. So as far as taking a little longer than we would have hoped, we didn't have a lot of responses, and the responses we did receive weren't really that stellar. We also wanted to give Darcy a little time to see how she adjusted to the position, and that was kind of the explanation for why it took about seven months. We did want to make sure that it was a thorough decision, and we made the best decision.
Thank you. Anything else, Lisa?
No.
Bill, do you have something else?
Mr. Lepore, you're moving up from your current position?
Oh, yes, yeah, from the lib, the Youth Services Librarian.
And has your past position been filled yet? Backfilled?
Not yet. That would be the next step.
She's doing both?
Yeah, I was doing a little bit of both. I was getting some help from other library staff, though.
She's still working shorthanded over there?
Yeah.
Is there currently a search to fill your old position?
As far as I understand, that's the next step.
Right, so if you appoint her, then we can go on.
Who are you waiting on us? All right, no more questions then, Mr. Chair.
Bill?
You have to appoint her, and then we can go on.
I didn't know what the order was, I'm sorry, nobody put that through the piece of paper.
Do you have any new ideas, or new change, any kind of changes coming up to bring the library up to a higher standards, or something that would make the library better than it is now? Do you have any ideas, or any plans over there?
I think we're all working together on new ideas currently. Nothing set in stone that I can announce, but we are all working together, library staff meetings and trustee meetings, too, to do stuff like that.
Now, usually when you have someone that's in, I call it, in the higher position, that that person would maybe bring some ideas to the board or to the trustees, and you guys would work on it. So I didn't know if you had anything.
Yeah. While I was interim, I didn't, I was doing both, so...
Your hands were full.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Yeah.
No, I served on the search committee, and Darcy's certainly well-qualified. Since August, she's done a good job as the interim, and I think she'll continue.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Ms. Lepore to serve as a library director effective, I guess immediately, January 22nd, 2018, with a salary of $62,200 US dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
All set?
Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Next up, we have the appointment of Rob Carbone, is that right? To the Cable Advisory Committee, effective January 22nd, 2018, through June 30th, 2018. This is an annual appointment, and would be up for reappointment on July 1st, 2018. Can you go up to the podium, please? So the Cable Advisory Committee?
Yes, sir.
Do you know a lot about cable advisory?
I've worked in public access television for about the last 20 years, and I've been involved as a volunteer probably since 1992, so about, that's a long time.
So you know a lot about the system, then?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I've served as an advisor to the mayor of Woburn a little over a decade ago, when we were working with Verizon, coming into Woburn. And I've also served as liaison to the North Reading Cable Advisory Committee, where I currently serve as the executive director of NORCAM, which is the North Reading Cable Access Station.
Okay. Maybe you can help us with some of the audio problems we have, with the recordings we have on the public access channel in town.
Is it live or on playback?
Um, Ed, you get a lot of the feedback, is it both, live and playback, or is it just playback?
Both.
It's both, okay.
Particularly, particularly the volume of the audio, people make complaints that they have to turn their volume on their TV almost all the way up and still barely able to hear it.
Has anyone contacted the head-end facility where the signal comes back to the community, or reached out to Comcast in that manner? There might be an issue over on that end of things, if it's not the modulator or any of the equipment here, or it might even need replacement, so...
Well, I guess that's what, we don't know.
Yeah, well, that, yeah.
So that'd be a first, first step for you, would be to find out what the issue is, and then come back and say, you know, it's gotta be downstream, or it's over here and upstream.
Right, right.
That would be, that would be a great step in the direction that we need to go.
Sure, sure, I mean, that's what a cable advisory committee does.
Right.
It serves both as viewership satisfaction and you guys as the issuing authority, that everyone's happy, and happy with the contract, and happy with what's in place and what's working, or what's not working, and how can you address it.
Right, Ed, go ahead.
What's your, what's your, what's your thought on some competition for Comcast? Right now, they, right now, they're the only game in town.
Right, right.
And we need some help on getting some competition which will, which will probably lower the costs and maybe correct some of the problems. They seem to, the TV seems to be going down constantly, or maybe there's something you can, you can help us.
Right, that's an interesting point. I know that Fios was making their way into Massachusetts, and they had a falling out with one of the communities in greater Boston, they've kind of put a halt on that.
Right.
But I'm sure there's a provider either from north, or even from somewhere around here, whether it's Time Warner, or RCN, or someone that might be able to come in. With having multiple providers, it doesn't necessarily drop the price, but it does sometimes bring back more franchise fees to the community to help better the systems in place. Also having competition does kind of keep them from thinking they're the 800-pound gorilla in the room.
Right.
You know, 'cause, sure, they are right now, because they're the only game in town, but this landscape of cable access and cable TV in general is gonna be changing rapidly over the next 10 years. I mean, I know people that are cutting the cord and just going with, you know, streaming and whatnot, and how that's gonna affect cable television in the future is very, very interesting, so, yeah. It's, but, yeah, if you're interested in looking at competition, I mean, we could certainly research that, why not?
I know, I know we had, we had discussions, spoke to Verizon, and they have, they have no interest in coming here until, until they do Haverhill.
Right.
But what I don't understand is they, they wired up, Verizon wired up Georgetown, and...
Interesting.
If you go through, you probably go through Georgetown on your way to work.
Yes, sir.
And you see outside the town hall, they have two, two channels that they can pick up, the local access, one on Verizon, the Fios, and one on Comcast. So it, it is somehow, it is doable.
Oh, it most certainly is.
And I know that some, some towns are doing it on their own, through their municipal electric company.
That's true, Amesbury did for a while, they're not still doing it now. And I know one of the biggest examples was probably about 15 years ago, went up to Tacoma, Washington, and Tacoma Power actually has their own cable service they provide to the people at Tacoma, Washington. It's pretty fascinating how they do it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're open to suggestions.
We'd rather be paying them than Comcast.
Yeah, yeah, hey, I welcome competition, you know, I think that, you know, without even putting my own personal feelings towards them as a cable provider, I think that competition is a good thing, competition's better for the customers and viewers in town, it winds up being better for the public access facility, and, yeah, let's research if we can make it happen, let's try to make it happen, especially if they are in Georgetown, it's not too much further to go down 97.
Exactly.
You know, so, yeah, why not?
Okay. All set, Ed?
Yeah, you're almost, I think, Bill.
Okay.
No, I read your paperwork, it looks like you have quite the knowledge to do this, and I know that we definitely need more board members in that, in that committee, whatever you want to call it, so, anything we can do to grow it and get the people in, and...
Sure thing.
Get a good board in, and like you say, look over everything, and...
Yeah.
Get us going in the right direction.
Even the contract, I was like, just reviewing it, it's like, I think the Comcast could be giving you guys a little bit more, you know, I think they'd be providing a lot more for you guys, so...
Okay. Lisa?
Thank you for applying, and we're gonna welcome your expertise.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I'll do my best, you know?
Bill, anything?
Yeah, a couple of things.
All right.
This is, this is currently the Cable Advisory Board that doesn't have a quorum?
Correct.
How does his number help fill that quorum?
He will be the third member, so they will have, now have a quorum.
Awesome.
Oh, cool.
So that helps in that regard. Now, I don't know if you were watching a couple of meetings ago, let me see, I think that was referring to my notes back in early December, mid-December, we, we had voted here to kind of rob Peter to pay Paul, we took some money from the Cable Advisory money, because we had rather an emergency here with some infrastructure, some network infrastructure that needed immediate, immediate service. How do you feel about that?
It's, ultimately, you guys are the issuing authority. It's not common practice to take cable funding, because by act of Congress, cable funding is for cable access and for cable television purposes. Some communities do that, some people put it in an enterprise fund, some people put it in a general fund, some people put it in a revolving fund, but if it betters the community, it's an emergency, I kind of can't argue that, especially if you guys really need to address a major issue. But it's always tough stealing from Peter to pay Paul, too, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not crazy about the idea either, but sometimes necessity...
Right, right.
You know, you have no choice.
Especially with smaller communities, it's tough.
Some of the cable, didn't it? Did we use that? We kind of, didn't I call it out a little bit?
No, I just didn't follow what you were asking me.
Some of that money was used toward the cable or the...
Oh, we've been using the cable money for the cable all along.
Right.
So, I don't know if you noticed, in our license, under the PEG section with the funds, it actually states cable or any other technology purpose.
Right, right.
So we use that to, yes, use some funds to cover town, the town hall server specifically, but to update some technology infrastructure, as well as the cable that we've been providing.
Right.
This is separate from the capital investment that Comcast makes with us every year.
Interesting.
Now, how do you feel about à la carte options?
Such as?
Such as, if I never see another Keeping Up with the Kardashians, you know, I can live without it, and I'm still paying for it, you know what I mean?
Right, right. You know, very interesting point, and I'll even bring it to even much more closer to home, sort of aspect. When I started in North Reading, we used to get Lawrence Community Television, because that was the third channel. You know, we had, we were given, we had three spots in the lineup for public access, and they only gave us an educational access and government access channel. Through efforts by myself and my staff and just volunteers, we were able to generate enough local programming to qualify for that third channel. As for doing à la carte with getting rid of the Kardashians and whatnot, I wish that was an easier thing to do. I think if cable was running that manner, where you pick and choose the channels you wanted, it'd be a lot better. But I mean, that's their operation, you know, that's what happens when they run the, what's in the lineup. I mean, you could tell them not to, or you could just simply skip the channel when you pass through the lineup, but...
So that's not a part of the Board's power of influence over the...
Right, right, I don't know if you can necessarily be like, hey, we don't want this channel because it's mind-numbing television, yeah, no, they're gonna, regrettably, someone pays for that show, pays for that spot in that channel's lineup, and that channel's paid for by much deeper pockets than us, so, I mean, that's why it's gonna be stuck in the lineup. However, if it ever does switch to an à la carte system, I'd welcome that, too, because I think, I'd rather pick and choose what I wanted. I mean, you can do it on a streaming media box like Apple TV, or Roku, or an Amazon Firestick, why couldn't you do it with the cable box, so...
Right. Now, as far as local programming, love to hear that. We should have more of it, you know, get into the local schools, tape their plays, maybe some sporting events, you've got, you've got Little League, baseball, your soccer, basketball. How do you feel about, you know, getting crews out there and getting some of this stuff on tape, so...
We do, we have an active, but we only have one person filming, so he goes to as many sporting events and school productions as he can around town meetings.
Right, so I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Carbone, how many friends he has with cameras, is what I'm getting at, you know what I mean?
Um, I mean, I think what might be a good first step is actually getting like a, a home base for your public access, where you could have equipment on hand for people to use, take classes, sign it out. Maybe you can have a small studio space where they could tape stuff in-studio, I mean, that generates a lot of local programming ourselves. I mean, we started in 2008 in a converted classroom in North Reading High School, and we just inherited a pile of stuff that did not work from Comcast, and from that point on, I've grown the program and hired the staff and everything. I mean, you kind of have to have that, more of that approach. It's tough to just kind of do word-of-mouth, and, oh, hey, well, Bob's got a camera, he'll just run over, it's, what happens if Bob isn't around, or Bob's camera breaks? Then it's one thing when you have a centralized home base for your public access operations. I think that's also important. It doesn't have to be very large, I mean, you don't need a very big room to get started, you just need to get started, I think. You need to get a few cameras out there and get a few people trained. Outreach to the school department's great, I don't know what Penn Tucket might have, like a high school video program, or a video club, or even a middle school video club. Can always, you know, hope for the good graces of parents that are seeing their kids at the Bagnall, what their kids doing there, their spring concerts and whatnot, I mean, that's always a good start, too, is to work with the PTAs and the school department there, too, so... But, yeah, I think having a home base, or at least some place where people can come and learn how to use this stuff and not be afraid to use it, or, that's part of the learning curve with a lot of people, is they're too, they're afraid they're gonna do a bad job, and it's gonna look bad on the end. If you encourage those people and you, you know, empower them to actually get involved in that they can do this, then, I mean, that's huge, that really is. I mean, that's where you start to generate a volunteer base, and that's when you start getting events at the library tape, or a special guest speaker somewhere, or a concert on the Common done, just by the homegrown grassroots efforts of the people of the community. Because, I mean, my, my community that I work in isn't very much, isn't much bigger than Groveland, so, and we have the same, we have the same issues, we'd like to get more people out there and about doing stuff, but the volunteers we do have, we greatly appreciate, and some of them are just high school kids, some of them are retirees, and some of them are just people that have a general interest in doing this, so, they're out there.
Great.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, he's got more energy than every 10 people I know. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion before he runs away. Make a motion to appoint Mr. Carbone to the Cable Advisory Committee, effective January 22nd, 2018, through June 30th, 2018. Is he on your appointment? Hopefully, the experience is great, and he'll come back on July 1st, or re-up.
All right, excellent, let's see what we can do.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks for stepping up.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
All right, next up, we have discussion and possible vote, we have Sewell Street Reclamation Project, follow-up discussion.
Bill Daley, Setman Hemlock, also Sewell Street. So I sent over a couple variations of some conditions that we spoke about the last meeting, just following up this time, here to answer any, any other questions you guys may have.
Yeah, I read through the documents you sent over, I think one of the major one was the performance bond, which you supplied.
Yep.
From my perspective, I think most of my questions have already been answered, either when we had our first meeting, or with the last select meeting you were at, so I'll open it up to the rest of the Board. Ed, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no.
Bill?
No questions, no.
Lisa?
No.
Bill?
Yeah, you know, for the first time, I was actually down there today trying to get my head wrapped around the site, so it's really a rough road there. Once you get by the Greenwood Auto Body, the pavement ends, and it's rough all the way down.
Yes.
And you're gonna be on the left side as you're going down.
Correct.
And, um, where was it? Entrance will be secured, so I guess I'm trying to envision entrances, I see the big, what is it, backhoe, or whatever, and then there's these big stones there.
Yeah, that was their old entrance, where they are, so the new entrance will be kind of more towards Salem Street at a, at a better angle, you know, and there'll be a gate across that, and then either chain link fencing, or, in the past, they used a lot of the oversized boulders along the property line, or something like that, but it'll be secure for four-wheelers and vehicles. A fence, if someone wants to get in, they're still gonna climb it, so, I don't, but there is some fencing there, but chain link fence, if, if the site is feasible for that, when it gets closer to that, one or the other, but it will be, it will be secured on a nightly basis.
Kind of narrow, no, no problems getting your vehicles in and out of that?
Um, no, I don't think so. I mean, those trees could be trimmed up and other trees removed, so, no, there's enough room, and the way the, it opens up just, I don't know, it's maybe 150 feet in, maybe?
Yeah, where, where Legals...
Well, before that, there's an old Audi, a white Audi car there.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's where it's gonna kind of make the angle into the property, way up there, so it'll open it up, and, and that road, I mean, that's, that's, in relation to the bond for the road, it's, I have to, the bonding company, is it gonna bond something for a lot more than what the road, what the real cost of the road would, would be to repair, and, you know, it's a tough, it's, I think I got the bond, I think we agreed with the bonding company for like $75,000, which I could move around with it if need be, but they're not gonna bond $75,000 or something that's only $25,000 worth of work, you know, so, there's no utilities in that road now, and like you said, it's all gravel and beat up, and I'd be maintaining it the whole time, so, I thought that was fair, but...
Yeah, yeah. So that, that secures the property from that site. As far as gaining entrance to access from other areas?
The other areas, you know, there'll be, it's posted, the entire property's posted. There will eventually be a turtle protection fence, but as far as, no, the entire site will not be fenced off.
Yeah.
Maybe at the, at the end, but not, not in the beginning.
I know you have children around my age who worry more about them than the turtles.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot of snowmobiling activities up there, there's, you know, every, you know, there's empty beer cans all the time, you know, you know, new, new ones, so there's definitely activity up there, and it's, yeah, it's definitely a safety issue up there, there's no question about it, you know, especially when it's dark.
Hmm.
So, so I like to, you know, I think I've taken all the necessary measures and gone above this the right way, and, and really did all my homework, and have all the right people involved to kind of cover, you know, cover all the bases and protect everybody, including the town. So, it's kind of where I'm at, but, anything at the site is gonna be, be protected and overseen, so it's really my, I have to follow a certain set of rules as I go, so...
I think, I think you will. I'm good, anything you can make with that land is just better use.
Okay.
Um, so in our last conversation, did you come up with any ideas for use? Not holding you to it, but any?
Um, you know, yeah, I mean, I have things in mind, but it's, it could be 18 months out for that, but, um, I don't plan on changing the zoning down there. I plan to keep it as industrial use and, and as we get closer, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what, what type of industry, but, um, definitely.
What I'm after is, um, I'm after trying to turn that into an, obviously, industrial. I like to see property tax, I like to see personal tax, I like to see income tax, I mean, people paying into the town.
Sure. Excise taxes, everything, yeah.
When I say win-win, there's a win-win for the town.
Sure. No, I know. I've been there since '01, my taxes have, you know, over-doubled so far, so.
Right. You don't need any more residential, you need to bring some income in.
That's right.
You already, one of my things was originally was the, um, you talked about the bond and the, and no utilities in the road. Obviously, you wouldn't owe, you wouldn't bond it for more than it's worth. I understand that part. And, um, someone mentioned something about getting on the property with the snowmobiles. You're going to carry liability insurance, I'm sure.
I have liability on the property now.
So you're covered there. Not that you'd want anyone getting hurt, but I mean, you, you're covered in that avenue. No, I don't see any problems with it. Um, I know that you submitted, um, a couple different, um, plans here for, uh, sign-off and conditions, and I like the one that, um, it spells out the 75,000 right out, right off the bat and having us all sign it. And I think that's yearly, if I do remember, we have to sign that yearly.
That's why I gave you guys a couple of options. I don't know if you, maybe you guys don't want to sign one, you just want to acknowledge it as a, as a board or, you know, whi- whichever one you want to do. If you decide on using another one, you just write the, write the bond number in. I don't, so...
Well, however.
Yeah, however you guys want to do it, but I'd appreciate, um, one back, that's all, you know, whenever.
All set, Bill?
Yep. Good, thanks.
Ed?
Do you, um, do you have to go to planning, uh, zoning, or are you going to, you're going to do a public hearing so that, uh, neighbors or butters can, can weigh in?
I'll meet with all the butters prior to any work anyways, um, before, before even the, the, uh, tree, tree clearing, but, um, yeah, I will, we will be doing site plan review, but, you know, with the new zoning, with the light industrial, you know, it is a buy right, so once we get going, we'll start working on the site plans, um, and then follow all the planning board process.
Now, obviously, you, if you're going to, uh, put some structure out there, you're going to have to run utilities out. Are you going to use Sewell Street, uh, to, to run utilities? Obviously, you have to run electric, electric and, and water.
Yep.
And the, uh, the electric companies onboard with, with, you probably haven't even got that far.
Um, electric company set up temporary pole farming already, um, a couple of months ago, so that's good. And, you know, Tom, I, you know, I do water and saw, um, that's part of my day job, so, you know, I'm sure Tom would want a, a loop line or at least an eight inch line coming down there. Um, I talked to the other owners down there who, who may be doing some projects in the back. Yeah, I have no problem bringing the water and possibly even the saw into that area.
And, and the sewerage?
Possibly. I mean, depending on what the, what the end use of that, of the, of the land is. Chester would probably get on board with that, too.
Electric going to be above, obviously, it's above ground.
I would go underground.
It's going above ground.
I would go underground. 2018, I would absolutely go underground.
You're going underground?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I, I don't, at this time, I don't have any other questions.
Is there a...
Is somebody in here who had a question? I don't want to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead. You have to go up to the podium, though.
Elaine Wozni, Chair of the Board of Health Department, and my main concern, at this point anyways, is the sewerage. Um, septic will not be allowed on that property. It will have to be public sewer. I mean, that's something that has to be addressed, I think, probably early in the process. It's best to know, be aware of it and address it. It's septic systems, new construction have got to be placed in naturally occurring pervious material, and they cannot be more than three feet of cover over the system. So from the amount of fill going in there, it sounds like that's kind of impossible. And that's just something that I...
So, the plan, so the...
Can you go up to the, so we can hear you?
Sure.
The site's 28 and a half acres. The actual filling is only about five. So there's more than enough, yeah, there's more than enough, um, material, land to, to accommodate, you know, large septics.
So were you planning on doing a septic tank?
It depends.
Or whatever?
It depends what goes in, yeah. If, I mean, if it's low, low employees or low, you know, low, say it's like a giant factory with, you know, it's all automated.
Yeah.
You know, you could probably get away with the septic, but the septics do get costly, depending on the uses, you know, with, with the treatment, then you almost see like a plant there.
Right.
And, and the pumps and all that, so it almost gets to be the same as, as just bringing the saw up from, from down on Sana Street. But it depends. If there's one huge guy making boxes in there, you know, in a million square foot house, warehouse, and he only has three employees, I, I would do a septic.
Right.
You know, and there's, like I said, there's over 23 acres.
But whatever way you go, you're going to meet the Board of Health requirements?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, um, just be, if you're going to go a big septic system, DEP is quite likely getting involved, and the septic system does have to be located on the lot that it serves. I don't know if it's going to be one solid lot or multiple smaller lots.
No, we'll meet all DEP and, and, and local Title V regulations.
I was going to say, if you're going to talk again, either you got to go up to the podium or get a microphone. I'm sorry, what was that, Bill?
Um, no, I, we plan on meeting all the DEP and Title V regulations, but whatever goes in there. I mean, the civil engineer who's here tonight can, can answer any of those questions. I'm sure he'll draw whatever he has to draw.
Yeah, I'm sure that's part of the development. I just want to make sure that her concerns are addressed.
I completely understand, yeah. It's not, it's not 1,000 feet of fill going in, you know, 28 acres. It's, it's a small piece of this, um, of this land, you know?
Okay.
Like I said.
Anybody else have any questions? No? So Denise, do we sign something? Do we vote on this? How do, how do we proceed?
There are four options, and I think, um, one and one A, I think, is the same with the exception of the amount of the performance bond, and then there's a second and a third version, so it's all different conditions that he put before you two. If you want to talk about them, think about them, you could select one of these. There were all different options of, um, what the conditions would be that you guys would choose.
I think the conditions are all the same. It's just whether you wanted, all of yous wanted to sign it, none of yous wanted to sign it, you were okay with the 75,000, or there's another one without the, with the amount you could write in, so.
One and two are the same?
I think it might have a blank space.
Yeah, one has a space to write in an amount for the performance.
One A has a space.
Yeah, I think one and two is the same with the exception of the signature lines.
Got it, okay.
Lisa?
And then three is the same.
So my preference is not to sign anything, simply because, I, again, I don't feel like this is my area of expertise, and to sign it means, for me, is that I'm endorsing it, and I don't, I think what you told me is that it's not required, correct?
Well, I don't know what, there's really no permit, so I don't, you know, I've been, I've been kind of stuck in limbo with the town, you know, it's, so that's why I gave, I, I, I know, it's just, it's not like there's a form in the, in the Board of Selectment Office for you guys to pull out and, and, and sign and, and hand it to the, to the applicant, so I don't know.
But it doesn't sound like, I, I'm just, I didn't think that you needed our approval.
Well, so these conditions, though, are the board's really conditions to bill on this project. So that's why if you look at them, it's the hours of operation.
It's a little bit different.
Maintaining the road. So there's no real approval, but this is him wanting to work with the town and get your blessing by following these conditions.
So these were our conditions that we put towards him, and now we're saying that you're going to meet these conditions and we're going to sign off on these conditions?
And you're going to bless the project so he can move forward. And you'll inform DEP that we've met, and these are the conditions the board has set forward.
The only reason that I, I like the idea of, um, having it in writing is because we're on board with it, we know what the set of conditions are. It's one step forward that the town's kind of protected. I, I understand Lisa doesn't want to put her name to something that we're not qualified, but this is kind of more on protecting the town, hours of operation, et cetera, et cetera. And I like the idea that he's plugged in a $75,000 number for the bond, so we know that exceeds the work on the road. And I mean, I'm well assured, I know he's, there isn't any utilities, and if he does put utilities in there, that's, he's going to be investing into that anyway. So I definitely think that, um, I get what you're saying, you don't want to sign for something that, um, that we, we're getting, getting out of our league with, but I think this is protecting the town.
It seems that you know more than I do, and if you have a higher comfort level, that gives me some more confidence.
No, I do, I, I do, I, I, I mean, if he came in here and said he wanted only a $25,000 bond, I'd say forget it. I mean, I think there's probably a $40,000 road there. I mean, so 75, I think he's gone well over what, what he needed to do.
And if I just may, so if you look at the conditions, they're all things that you've talked about.
Right.
That he's going to follow his soil management plan that he submitted. He's going to follow the orders of conditions for conservation. He's going to copy the town on the DEP, so you're not really asking anything outrageous. Really, what you're doing is sort of specifying, like I said, the hours of operation, the performance bond. Everything else is stuff that he's already said he's going to do as part of the project. So I think, as Bill said, it's just something to have in writing that says we've met, he's articulated these items, the board's comfortable with them. Um, but there's really nothing outrageous that's being done with these conditions.
No, we can go back and say, you know, you, you signed up for 14 conditions and just three of them not being met, and we need to discuss it.
Absolutely, yeah. DEP's not going to bail out and say, here you go, Board of Selectment. That's not, you know, that's, I'm sorry, I misunderstood where, where you're going with that, Lisa. Yeah, these are for the, for the general conditions of what we spoke about last. I was, hopefully, I covered everything.
So, do we, Bill?
Yeah, and Bill, I don't want to stick you in a corner. The 75,000 performance bond damaged to Sewell Street. I don't know how anybody noticed that street was damaged. Um, but, uh, and number seven, I R and D will repair any damage to Salem Street that it may cause, but there's no price tag associated with that. And the last thing I want to do is get into a, you know, a contest between you and us on how much is how much. You know what I mean? Should we put a figure on that just so we're all comfortable?
What you're considered damaging?
I don't know what damage is. He doesn't know what damage is.
Well, if a truck spilled its load or something, or, I don't know, um, had a, a piece of rim hanging off and gouged the road as he's turning in, obviously, I can't be responsible for all of Salem Street because there's so much truck traffic on that. We wouldn't know who...
Right.
Who it was, but it would be a telltale sign whether it's coming in, like, a lot of turning, you know, so that, that area's going to get, get worn.
Mm-hmm.
If it starts breaking up, obviously, I'd be responsible. But that, that road was built to state spec, so I don't anticipate it, but I, I, I put it in there just, I don't, you know, if, if there's damage out there that's obviously caused by the project, I don't, I'm not going to try to weasel out of it because I didn't have that in my, in my conditions. That's all. I mean, I just want you to know that I'll take it.
And I would just say, the certificate of liability doesn't specifically point to Sewell Street, so you could say there's a $75,000 performance bond on the project, whether it happens to be the Sewell and Salem Street intersection.
Yeah.
Or Sewell Street as a whole. I think 75,000 will cover sort of any repairs that may need to be done on either.
Yeah, I could have the performance bond written up as, as for road, um, damage, and, you know, and general.
Yeah, or, or just amend number seven to say that the performance bond, um, you know, talked about in number two also relates to number seven, and, and I'm good.
I think the bond's going to cover that anyways, generally, so I'm, it's fine.
So do we just...
Just a question. Uh, I, I don't see anything written in all of these, uh, that you're going to repave Sewell Street in the end.
Well, that, that would be part of the, the final site plan. I mean, uh, obviously, that, that will get redone.
You did say you're, you're going to have to increase the, the width that right now, I think you said from the last meeting was a 40-foot roadway that was in there.
It's a 5-foot roadway, correct.
That's going to have to be widened, and you're, you're going to, uh, when you're done, you're going to, uh, hot top that, uh, and that, will that fall under zoning or, or planning to, uh, when you go over that?
I would say planning under the site plan review, you know, whether it's granite or asphalt berm, I don't, you know, I don't know what, what the requirements out there will be.
Okay.
Eric Barman, my civil engineer for the project.
Hi, yeah, I'm Eric Barman with Millennium Engineering. Um, as we go through this, whatever happens to Sewell Street will, um, go through the planning board process. So, um, paving, granite curbing, catch basins, whatever, that'll all be as per whatever the planning board requires at the end.
Okay. All set?
Yeah.
So, do we pick which one we want to go with, or are they...
Well, again, they're pretty much the same. I don't think there's any, so, um, if you're okay with the 75,000, I do think that, um...
We may want to amend this just to, uh, number two, R and D will supply the town with 75,000 performance bond for any damage that may occur to Sewell Street and/or Salem Street, and then eliminate number seven altogether.
And we could make that as part of our motion, right?
Would that be acceptable with you, Bill?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I would make a motion that we accept number one of the Sewell Street Reclamation Project with the amendment to number two adding "and" Salem Street and deleting number seven.
I'd say "and/or."
Uh, that's fine.
Yep, "and/or" Salem Street.
"And/or" Salem Street. "And/or" Salem Street.
Is there a second?
Can I just make a quick...
One second. I'll second.
Second.
I'm just questioning, I don't know what you have in front of you, but it does control measures addressed.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ed?
Uh, no.
Lisa or Bill?
No.
No. All those in favor?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good night.
So, Bill, do you want to send me a clean one with those amendments, and I'll have it signed?
I will. We're going to, we're going to delete seven and amend two.
"And/or," right.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Amazon's looking for new headquarters, Bill. Just, just, you know, just putting it out there.
That's why he's going to need the box factory.
50,000 jobs in Groveland.
Maybe we could, uh, give a copy of this to the, uh, the Board of Health also.
Sure, once it's signed, I'll get that out.
Once it's, once it's signed.
All right. Moving on to Water and Sewer Department to discuss recent water breaks. Tom? Hello.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, we got your letter.
Yep.
I know Bill O'Neill had brought up a couple of questions on what had happened pretty much over Christmas break, I guess, um, with School Street and some of the, the water main breaks. So could you go into a little bit more detail on what happened with those?
Sure.
Kind of the timing of things, how, how they were repaired, how it's been, I guess, temporary repaired until it's permanent repaired, that kind of stuff?
Yep, sure, absolutely. So, like it summarized in the, in the email, Christmas Eve, a call came in, um, crew was dispatched out there, water main break, and, um, you know, it was evaluated, it was repaired. Uh, the guys did a great job. Um, it's kind of, they're out there. They were, yeah.
Oh, man.
It was before the big storm, so, um, you know, both our guys and, um, East Coast Excavating, uh, the, the Groveland Police Department being out there. It was a tough location. Tough night, everybody wanted to be with their family, but they're out there. And, um, really, the long and short of it was, the, the water main was installed roughly seven feet deep. I mean, anytime that you get a break, certainly on a new road, it's not ideal, right? But the, um, the water main was laid on ledge. So it was just a matter of just bad luck. Uh, poor installation, if you will. I mean, the pipe dates back to the sixties. It wasn't a pipe, or isn't a pipe, that's scheduled to be replaced.
Was that, was that pipe touched during the eighties when that road was first redone? That ninety-seven project?
Not that I'm aware of. I, not that I'm aware of. I mean, the, the pipe was renewed in the eighties on School Street. But not in this section.
So that's original to the nineteen-sixties?
To the sixties.
Okay.
So, and I tried to give you a bit of a, a breakdown on how we, um, evaluate the pipes in town and catalog them according to, um, a repair schedule. And it's like really low on the schedule. So it's, it's not something that we would look at and say, you know, we're doing a road job out there and, you know, we're gonna repair this section. There was a small section in front of Nicole's that was undersized. And we repaired that like years before the project actually got going. But this section of main, there was no reason to, to think that it needed to be repaired, quite frankly.
So just because the roadway was scheduled by the state to be repaired, doesn't mean that all the infrastructure underneath, other than drainage, was gonna be repaired at the same time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it would've been a cost that would've been borne by the ratepayers.
Right.
If it was something the state said, hey, we're gonna throw money at you and will we do it all? And we, that's what we tried to do with the hydrants, is take advantage of any kind of hydrant replacement, which is what led into the, to the next conversation, for the next, the next break. But, yeah, it was, you know, everything was looked at prior to the project going out to be bid. And it was never a talk about replacing the water main.
Right.
Do you think that, um, the cutting of the grade of that road down and through there and the hammering with the, the compactor might've helped that?
You know, Bill, I'll be totally honest with you, that's the first thing I thought of. But it being seven feet deep.
Yeah.
I just, and it, and it lying on ledge? You know, I mean, there was work out there, y- you know, could it have? I suppose, it, it could've. I can't say for sure. I just know that the guys had to jackhammer for three hours just to get the rock out of the way so they could get a, a repair clamp on the pipe. So the pipe was sitting right on ledge. And that whole area has a lot of outcropping with ledge.
Having that laying on ledge, really, even if it was with their machines hammering it, it was, it wasn't installed, right? So you really can't go back to the contract.
It wasn't, it was not installed properly. It wasn't embedded.
Back to the contract.
Yeah. Typically, you embed it about eighteen inches around the pipe. You want some sort of good gravel.
Yeah.
You, you, you don't wanna put it on ledge.
Right.
We see it a lot, but it's just not the way you wanna do it.
All set?
Yeah.
Ed, anything?
They, they didn't excavate down seven feet on that, in that area, did they?
Yeah, we had to get to the pipe.
No, no, uh, the, when they, when they did the road.
No.
So, so that was something, installation, you're not talking about, uh, when the ninety-seven was done. You're talking about back, uh, originally in, in nineteen-sixties.
Correct. I mean, they may have brought it up from that, Ed, like, I, I believe they might've raised that road up at one point.
I think in the eighties, they probably raised it.
Yeah, so they probably brought the fill up back in the eighties. You could see kind of a line. Normally, five foot is the, is the mark that you're looking for, for, for a bury depth.
Yeah.
All set, Ed?
Yeah, so I, I just wanna make sure it wasn't, uh, it wasn't their installation that, when they did the ninety-seven that, that did it.
I'd like to say, I just, I can't say that it was, to be honest with you. I really can't.
Lisa?
All set, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, um, Tom, first of all, I drove by your guys when I were working. I, I gotta thank God for two things. One, that, uh, your guys were so dedicated to go out there on Christmas Eve. And it had to be with the wind chill about minus twenty. And the other thing that I thank God for was I didn't work for the Water Sewer Department that night. Now, I guess they're gonna move forward in the s- spring and pave the rest of ninety-seven there? Are they gonna pick up where they left off and keep going, right?
You mean on the rest of the whole project?
Yeah. No, no, they're not.
Nope. That's phase two, doing the remainder of ninety-seven, which is not planned anytime soon.
Oh, it's not planned, then, okay. Then I guess my question doesn't really mean anything, wondering if, as they plan to do that, is there any plan to look and see if there's any more of that pipe that's on ledge that's subject to failure?
Yeah, that's something that, um, the next phase, you know, it's not gonna include that piece of pipe. So that, that phase is done.
Right.
I, I don't think there's anything that we can really do except for obviously to go back and do a, a good permanent patch out there in the spring. Right now, they, you know, it's a good temporary patch, it's there for the time being. And we'd, we'd address the other one that's, that happened also on, on School Street. The one on School Street, that was actually on a hydrant. And there were about a half a dozen hydrants that were identified to be replaced. And this was one of them. And when the job was originally done out in that section, it was like, I wanna say eighty-four, eighty-eight is when they did that job. It might've been eighty-six, but somewhere in the, the mid-eighties when they did all of School Street over. So though, that main is, like, we would consider new. It's a real good main, um, never had any problems out there. One thing that we did have them do is when they put in these new hydrants, I had them put in an additional auxiliary gate. So what that means is there's a, there's a gate there that controls the hydrant. And you shut that off to work on the hydrant. Well, when the call came in, um, we thought that it was the work that they did, the new work that they had performed when they were doing the job. Well, come to find out, it was actually the old gate, the bolts that hold, when you look at a water main gate, there's a, we call it a bonnet that sits on the top. I sent you guys some pictures, I don't know if it was really clear to see.
I didn't forward them the pictures because there was, there were too many and it was too big.
Yeah, sorry, but, so, that particular gate, a- a- as most, they have bolts that hold this bonnet on top. And they failed, which very rarely happens. It just, again, it was bad luck. It wasn't something that they did. It wasn't something that we could predict. It wasn't something that they touched. All their work was before that. So I, I'd like to say that that was something that happened within the project. But I can honestly sit here and say, I mean, what I'm, I'm gonna do is I'm gonna reach out to the manufacturer and see if there's some sort of recall maybe on that gate. So that in the future, if we do pick up on the rest of that project going down the road, if that is something that they would stand behind and fix. But it's, it's not something that I've seen normally, so.
So when that, in the spring, when you get this all situated and settled and what have you, are you gonna try infrared in those areas, seeing what's a brand-new road?
Yeah, I talked to Bobby about it. Obviously, it's whatever the protocol is out there to make it right.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll do the best we can. You know, it's an excavation on a brand-new road, it's unfortunate, but it was just, you know, kinda one of those things, so.
You think the intense cold might've had anything to do with it?
Uh, it could've. You know, the fact that the, that the bolt broke, though, I mean.
That deep? Yeah.
I mean, that, that was a normal, normal depth. We, we've had a high amount of breaks this season. We're up to almost six. And that definitely has to do with the cold, there's no doubt about it. But, you know, that was a failure on the actual hardware, which is really bizarre.
And what about the, uh, the hydrants? That was part two, right?
That was the hydrant.
That was the hydrant, okay.
Yeah, so that was the hydrant that hap- that was a little farther up on School Street.
Right, okay.
So, when that call came in, they did some isolation and then walked away from the job because they got it isolated and shut down, thinking that it was on the contractor. When the contractor came back, because there was a big snowstorm in between there, and he excavated, we found that the bolts themselves were actually failed, so.
Anything else, Bill? You all set? Ed, you all set?
No, I'm all set.
Lisa, all set? Bill?
Good. Thank you for your service.
Let's, uh, let's put the bad luck to a minimum.
Yeah.
No one.
Good for that.
All right, Tom.
The guys have earned their money this year, so.
Yeah, I don't envy the cold that they were under. That was nasty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a request for streetlight to be added at the corner of Uptek Road and Berrywood Lane.
So I just say, I spoke with the light department, they see the need for a light there. Um, I've also talked to the police department, they were going to, um, keep an eye on it at night, just to see what type of issue it is. It is a dark corner, so they wouldn't be opposed to have a light.
Right, I've been down there several times at night, and it's even at dusk or at dawn, and it's really, it's dark. And I think there's a bus stop down there, too.
There is a bus stop there. The light department has all the equipment and could easily put one in if this board gets approval.
Right. Anybody wanna make a comment about that? I'm, I'm in favor of it, I think that that's a safety concern.
I'm in favor, and I'd make a motion to, um, add a light at Uptek Road and Berry Lane.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
That was easy. All right. Next up, we have the memorandum of understanding for FEMA assistance to firefighter grant for self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. So I did ask Denise to do a little bit of research, so we had more information on what we're supposed to be talking about on this tonight, so.
All right, so I did speak with Tracy Blaze over in Newbury, she's the town administrator. I have gotten communication from Congressman Seth Moulton's office who supports this. Apparently, regional grants are very big when it comes to FEMA. And, um, we have a very good shot at this. So I will tell you, the other two communities have both approved it and are very anxious for Groveland to get on board with that. If the board chooses not to take any action on it tonight, we will have to withdraw from the application because it's, it is required at the end of the month to be submitted. Our portion, there's still some question as to when it would be fiscal eighteen or fiscal nineteen. But like Newbury's approach, it would be town meeting regardless before we could do anything. So the plan would be, um, by town meeting. If it's approved, we would have an article as a placeholder to utilize. Our portion with all of the equipment is about thirty-one thousand and change, as opposed to the twenty-eight thousand we thought before, to have an article on town meeting appropriating free cash in the event that the grant is awarded. That would get us about three hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of equipment under this grant.
For thirty-one thousand?
For thirty-one thousand, yes.
I would make a motion that we move forward.
Where do we sign?
I would make a motion that we move forward in collaborating with Georgetown and Newbury on this two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen regional grant for FEMA assistance.
I'll second that.
Uh, further discussion, when would we know, be notified?
So, we're not entirely sure of that, especially now with the government shutdown, we don't really know when this is gonna happen. Oh, is it back open?
Oh, they opened it today. Back open.
I just got something that everything else is related.
It was just a glitch in the system, it was only gonna happen a couple days.
Okay. We're not entirely sure, this is a, because it's due by February, there's some belief that hopefully by April, we might have an answer. But it was kinda like the unknown. So hopefully by town meeting, we will have, um, an answer, and then we can go ahead with making the appropriation.
Is the appropriation's gonna be a difficult thing to do with the budget?
No, I mean, I would recommend it's coming from free cash. So when we get our free cash certification, we just know that thirty-one thousand of it would be designate, designated if we are, if we are awarded this grant. If we're not awarded it, it would just fall back to free cash again.
Back to free cash.
You mean hope money?
Can we use last year's free cash, too?
Uh, we've, we spent it all and then.
Oh.
You have one year to use your free cash money to be appropriated once. So we will have the new free cash number once we get that certified.
Okay. So I'll have to go on. Yeah, earmark that.
Yep, so we would earmark that.
Ed, anything?
No, I don't have any.
All set, Bill?
I'm good.
Bill? All set?
Except what do I sign up for free cash? I hate that term. There's no such thing.
It's pre-tax, untaxed cash.
Hope money is what it is, it's hope, we hope we get it.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Next up on the agenda is discussion of temporary dispatch protocol that has already been addressed and rectified. So we don't need to talk about that.
Did I miss something?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you want an explanation?
I guess I kinda, just in case someone asks me, so I, I.
So, the police department was directed not to call the fire department because we were concerned about responses when last week there was a couple of non-responses from the fire department with medical calls.
Yep.
And we wanted Trinity to respond until we figured out how we're gonna handle things. It's been rectified to be pushed back, class five certification that the fire department will be called on all medical calls.
Yep. Well, that's it?
That's it.
Oh, it's up to speed then.
And basic.
I thought something else happened.
No, 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 no.
So it was resolved from the time we posted the agenda until shortly thereafter, but the agenda had already been posted.
Gotcha.
And, and just an FYI, because I think there was initially a knee-jerk reaction that, oh my gosh, the fire department didn't respond to a few calls. But what I learned in sort of reading this EMS agreement is that because we're, we're in a town with an on-call fire department, the response rate is required to be ninety percent. So if they don't respond, then it automatically goes to Trinity. There's a whole protocol in place to ensure that there is somebody that responds.
All set?
Good.
Okay. Moving on to votes of the board, we have the executive session minutes from November twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen.
I would make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the November twenty-seventh executive session meeting.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We have the minutes from December eleventh, twenty-seventeen.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from December eleventh, two thousand seventeen.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to old business, we'll start with Mr. O'Neill.
Old business, old business.
Previous agenda items that the chair does not reasonably anticipate will be discussed.
Yes. The town planner, any progress on that?
Nope.
Okay.
Still posted, still out there. I just, uh, I haven't re-advertized it at a cost yet because every time we put it out, we obviously pay for it. So it's on our website, um, it's still posted in Town Hall. I think once the board, um, you will see when we start getting into our budget discussions as the weeks go on, the planning board has made a request to increase that line item. If that's something the board would agree to at the time and concept, we could certainly look to post that position at a higher salary, because right now, the entire year's available salary. But right now, we have not had any interest since.
How much does the ad cost to win?
Well, it depends, if you run it in the local paper, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars. Every time you post it online, it's about a hundred dollars.
How about that, um, the ti- is there a town, um, like a, a city in town?
The public, uh.
Yep, the mass municipal, that's a hundred dollars.
You think it's worth just doing it one more time on there?
I can.
I don't think there's any benefit to putting it in the newspaper.
No, I would agree, not this type of position. So we ha- I haven't put it in the local newspaper. I usually just use MMA's website. I don't even print it in publication, because by the time their monthly publication comes out, those positions are already past due. But they have a website that's updated every single day, and that is the go-to spot for municipal positions. And that's where we run it. It's been on there twice so far, we've already paid twice for it to be up.
Now, mass unemployment's a freebie, right? You can throw it up on their website?
Yeah, but again, this is more of a specialized position, um, I don't know that.
But I think it goes to Job Quest, which is a, which is a statewide, so I wouldn't, I don't think there's any harm to it.
Hey, sometimes you, you know, you throw your, your line in the water, you never know.
Are there, um, have you noticed that there's any, um, other postings like that? Open positions in towns in the area?
In any town or just a town?
Yeah, just, just any town. Like, i- is there a lot of towns looking for that?
On the municipal.
Yes and no, I mean, there have been some that have been reposted on the MMA's website. I will tell you, I think our situation's unique, same thing with the, we've been looking for a van driver for the Council on Aging for months. Again, I think the number of hours is limited. The salaries seem to be lower in comparison, so I think it's just, you know, you're hoping to find someone that's either retired and looking for some hours or has another job and they're looking to supplement it. I think it's just tough because it's not a full-time. So on either one of those, you need to either work elsewhere or just be looking for a, a limited number of hours.
Okay.
Yeah, question, question on that, yeah? You mentioned about, uh, bringing it to the selectmen to maybe increase the, the salary. How, how can we increase it if that was a line item in, in the budget?
No, 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 I don't mean increase this year's, the request is in for next year's budget to increase.
Okay.
So this year, we have the full thirty-five thousand dollars that has not been spent yet. So you certainly could look, we could post it at a higher salary if it's something the board's gonna sort of fight for through the budget process because nothing's been spent. See, we could advertise it now at a higher salary because it's all available, is what I was referring to.
But it wouldn't necessarily be recurring unless we voted on it for next year.
Correct.
Okay.
So did we decide we're gonna re-advertise it for a hundred or not gonna bother?
Well, I mean, it's up to you guys, we don't have a budget for it, it comes out of my expense line every time we advertise. So in the request for next year, I have actually put in a personnel line, because again, we have, we've never budgeted for advertising positions.
Recruiting.
Do we have a hundred dollars to re-advertise it?
I'm sorry?
Do we still have a hundred dollars that we can re-advertise it?
I mean, I can, if that's important to the board, I can certainly, uh, have that money aside.
So, what, how long ago was it advertised previously?
So, we've done it twice, the first time was when, um, we originally opened the position and then we reposted it shortly after our last candidate declined. So it was probably October.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's with the start of the new year, it might be worth one more time.
How long does it run for?
Thirty days.
Yeah.
You still have money in your budget, pl- enough to cover? Okay.
We'll re-advertise it.
Next, personnel bylaws, committee, any, have we heard, any volunteers?
We have three.
If we get moving up.
We got the third one today. So it's up to the board if you want to move a committee forward with three members. That is a quorum, they would have to have all members present at any meeting to discuss it. Or it's still out there posted for more members.
I'd like to meet the members.
Yeah, well, I've, I've told them all that until the board decides to move forward, it wasn't worth putting one at a time until you guys decided how to proceed. So if you wanna proceed with appointing those three, we certainly could invite them in.
Or can we just start with forwarding their information to us?
Sure, so one of them has not given me information, I responded back to her and asked for some updates. I just got an email through the website. So I'll follow up with her again, I do have two resumes or two, you know, employment histories from two of the candidates.
Do you think is, it, to try and beef it up, that three is kinda slim, that we could get maybe up to five and get two members of, of, I wanna say management, but, you know, management.
Well, one member's supposed to come from the personnel, the body that the personnel policy covers, I haven't had anyone step up for that either. I'll put it in all the emails to the employees.
Yeah, the Water and Sewer Department seemed to be really interested, I mean, if we get one of those members on, then a, a, a member from another, you know, whether it be highway or fire or police or something, that.
What's the mandate of the composition?
It's four in one, so you need, it's only one employee.
Oh.
What's the, what, oh, it's a total of four?
It's a total of five, four residents and one employee. Is the makeup of the committee.
Oh, so even with three, we don't necessarily have enough.
Well, three is your quorum.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a minimum.
That is the minimum you can have to have a meeting.
But one guy catches the flu and nothing happens for a month, you know?
So I can put it back out to...
Enough's happening now anyway.
I can put it back out to employees. If you get an employee to step up, then at least you're at four. At least you have that buffer if someone can't make a meeting.
Right.
I think that makes sense to sort of solicit.
Could one of us be the fifth member?
As a resident, if the board wanted to approve you.
Are you nuts?
You could.
About the amount of time?
Yeah, you know, yeah. Listen, I never have enough to do. But...
Says you.
But I'll be honest with you, looking at these arcane bylaw, we've got to do something, we've got to do something quick. So if I have to step up to the plate and be a member, the fifth guy, I don't mind if it, you know, if it means getting it done.
Good.
Because we've got to push this forward. I mean, these, we're living in the Stone Age. There might as well be chiseled on granite.
If we have three candidates that have already put their name in, why not get the ball rolling and at least start with the three and then, you know, at least get them... Maybe when they get the ball rolling, maybe someone else will come up or someone else may, they may know someone or talk about it, I don't know.
Well, yeah, the first thing is getting the three here and getting them appointed. And hopefully in the interim, we have somebody like Water and Sewer that was really interested in the project to begin with to step up. And then I could be the fifth member, and then even if two of us are sick, out of town, broken leg, you can still have a meeting and get things done and move the project forward.
You want to try and add that to the next meeting?
I can add them to the next meeting.
I mean, this is something that, it's twenty years that it's been just, it's long enough.
Anything else, Bill?
For old business, uh, yeah. VZ Park, we had an issue with, um, insurance, underfunded insurance. Have we been able to close that gap at all? And then I've, I understand there was also another catastrophe, I guess, a small calamity with a boiler or something that went down, needed repairs or replacement. Is that, am I just hearing? Bertie's whispering things, right things in my ear, or...
Um, so I'm sure Mike could speak more about the boiler. As far as the insurance, the town is still paying the monthly premium in its entirety at this point.
Hey, Mike, we've been able to kind of close that gap anywhere at all?
Well, we're hoping to, we're hoping to. You know, I met with Denise, I think I told you or Denise told you, we met about this a couple of months back. And I, I think that by the end of the year, we'll be able to contribute something towards it by the end of the fiscal year. We take one day at a time up there. Last month, uh, the furnace on one of the cottages failed, so that ended up costing about eight thousand dollars. So that set us back. So that's why I'm saying, I'm hoping that we can have some extra left at the end to put towards the insurance.
Now, you mind me asking, where, where did you come up with the eight thousand dollars to fix the furnace?
Fortunately, we just had that, um, the wine and art. So we were able to raise about almost seven thousand dollars for that, so.
Unfortunately, you had to spend it all on that furnace.
Yes, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon which way you look at it.
I guess you're lucky you had enough people that like wine in order to, to cover that cost.
Yes, absolutely.
So that was, that was just east of the Minnesota Miracle as far as I can see. Okay, do you, does this winter festival bring in?
We don't sponsor that. We don't sponsor that. That's the, uh, activities committee, yeah.
Do they give you any money for?
Yeah, the activities committee is another issue that has to come before this board in the future because that's been, hasn't been appointed in years and there, there's been money appropriated that hasn't sort of followed the town.
They use your facility and they give you nothing for it?
No, because they're a town committee.
Okay.
I never even knew such a committee. Can we get that on the agenda sometime soon, so?
Yes.
Because I guess I don't know what I don't know, and I'd like to know what I don't know, so.
Yes, that's another issue altogether.
I can understand that a little more.
Mike cut away. I was going to maybe, the town, the town comes up with money for VC Park and they have to, in-town budget, we kick in money and what have you. I was thinking, since the last time we talked, is there anything that VC Park ever gives the town back? Like, um, like even if you guys had a day for the town people or something, is there anything that the town gets out of, what they paying?
The winter festival is, is basically one of the things that VC Park does for the town in conjunction with the activities committee.
Mr. Chair, through you in response with Bill, one of the things that VC Park does is the winter festival. In conjunction with the activities committee, the park is open to the public for the winter festival. The Bagnell chorus sings. There's usually sliding when there's snow and, you know, the park is open for the Golden People to come in. We get donations from people and vendors in town, so we give away free food. So it's not a paid event, it's an open event for the town of people, for the townspeople.
So the activity committee raises no funds, generates no revenues?
We, we solicit donations, yes.
So you...
Which is not really...
So you generate, are you a member of the activity committee?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, we found a member. Do you know who the...
I would say this, we really shouldn't be talking about the activities committee too much because that should be an agenda item.
Yeah, okay.
I think, um, because there is more to it.
Well, he, okay, got me down our road there.
I, I agree with what you said as far as it's the activities committee and it's a winter festival. My point is, is town people put an awful lot of money up there and what have you. And I understand they have the right to go use the property. I just was thinking of something over and above even from the winter, maybe summertime. A couple, two, three times a year.
Sure. Well, you know, just the, the, uh, town departments use the facility. The library uses the facility. The, um, you know, it's available for people to rent as a place for events, their own events at a lower cost. In the, the town rarely, um, pays for, currently pays for plowing and cutting the grass and insurance up until now. So it's kind of a collaborative effort. The rest of the remaining costs, the, the budget is about ninety thousand dollars a year, and that all comes from donations, fundraising, and event rentals on the property. So, you know, it, it's certainly a legitimate question and...
I just think that, not to interrupt you, but I just think that a lot of people in town, that VC Park has an aura about it, that it's a private little group of people that kind of run it, and that's what we need to get away from.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
And people need to have the, like you said about the open comments, people need to come in and have open comments and say that, hey, listen, the place is open for the public, come on in and use it and what have you. I, I don't think we're doing a good job at letting the town people know that that facility is for them to use.
Yeah.
It's the purpose of it.
Well, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a constant battle and, um, you know, you've spoken, we've had Vanessa Lopez in here. She does a great job of collaborative efforts with the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the library, other, other town groups like that. And, you know, I, I think in the past two or three years since she has been there that the amount of community use on a day-to-day basis, Monday through Friday, is great. Pentucket uses the facility. So there's a lot of things going on. I think it, you know, probably wouldn't hurt for, for us to give some kind of, uh, you know, just report to you guys on, on what those community events are. So I'll have her draw something up.
Yeah, if it's like once a month or something, at least that we can talk about it and people hear it.
Yep, yep.
Like you were saying, public comment, if we're talking about it and people, if they're hearing it, they're going to know it's there.
Right, right.
And I'm not criticizing anything up there. I think that, like you say, I, I'm nothing about the volunteer groups, I don't, not at all. I mean, I just want to let the town people know it's for them to use.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
So I'm not sure where this falls on the agenda. But we had an executive session on February, excuse me, what was the date, January eighteenth?
Thursday?
January eighteenth.
On Jan...
That became a public session.
That became a public session. And Chair Wood read a brief statement about what happened at that meeting. So one of the things was that this board tasked itself with basically conducting an investigation. And one of the things I want to raise is that it's come to at least my, my attention that there are instances of individuals being told what they should and should not say to the board. And, um, I think it's really important with something like this that people have an opportunity to be heard and it's not okay to tell people what they should and shouldn't say. So, um, I think it's really important that if you're a member of the fire department, allow your fellow firefighters to have their own voice. There's going to be an opportunity for that to be anonymous, and there's, there will not be any repercussions for people sharing information with this board.
Yeah, we won't tolerate censorship of any kind from anybody. Was that it for old business?
Yeah.
Bill?
Nope, I was going to talk about the town planner and Bill stole it from me, so. And that's it for that.
Yes, just one item. Any, uh, any information on Greenwood Autobots' class-two license?
Yes, he came in and complied with, after we sent the letter. He provided just last week an updated insurance policy, so we have released his license.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
That, that's all I have.
So just one quick question. If we want to draft a letter to the fire department, just reiterating what I said in the event that people didn't hear it, can we just send that letter out?
Yeah, Denise, can you draft something like that? Lisa's statement about censorship and coercion and not allowing people to speak their mind freely.
Certainly.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on to selectmen reports or committees in meetings. Ed, did you want to update anything?
No, I haven't got anything.
Bill? Lisa?
The Elm Square Committee had a meeting. Gosh, I'm just not good with dates, but I, I don't recall the date, but it was recent, within the last two weeks.
The eleventh, maybe?
In which Senator Tarr came, the Green Belt, Merrimack Valley, is it planning?
Planning.
And had a further discussion about monies. Mike also talked about CPA putting forth a request for CPA monies to potentially be used for the purchase of that property. And they're going to be moving forward, our next step was reaching out to the seller because there was quite a disparity between a new appraisal that we got and one that was done back when the property was taken by eminent domain. So the place that we are right now is trying to develop a dialogue with the seller. And I will ask that those meeting minutes be forwarded to the board, and that's pretty much it.
Did you get anywhere with connection with the seller? Did you, did you reach out and she respond, or was it just a reach out and nothing back?
Greg Stark reached out, that's what the committee asked him to do. And at that point, she responded that she didn't have an offer on the table and didn't think there was a value in talking about it. So that's why I think at this point that the board is going to be meeting again to discuss the next steps.
If I can just comment, just so the board's aware, we did have a realtor come in again last week with interest on that property, asking about the status of the taxes, and they said they had someone interested. I don't know if there's any value to that, but someone did come in last week.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Maybe Mike can answer this, I'm not sure. What is the criteria for using CPA money to purchase that? Doesn't it have to be a park or something?
But we are looking at, so Green Belt. So some of the uses that we're looking at, we've been looking at fisheries, potentially putting a fishing dock down there that would be handicap accessible. So the uses that we're looking at are consistent with CPA and some of those other entities. So that, the, the hope is that we wouldn't use any other town monies.
Okay. Any committee or meeting updates?
Yes, yes. We had a, there was a presentation of the new high school building committee, or new school building committee at the Bagnell last Tuesday that went very well. It's a very informative presentation. For those who missed it, there will be another one held on February twenty-seventh at six-thirty at Merrimack Town Hall. I encourage anyone, everyone to go, get informed on the project. It's taking shape and it's rapidly, and still a lot of issues to be discussed. So we're really interested in, in hearing your thoughts, your concerns, and sharing your, having you share your ideas with, with the building committee so that we can make sure this project meets everyone's expectations of what they want. So I encourage you to get out there and be part of the discussion and be part of the, um, the project.
How long is that meeting about, General Lee?
That one lasts, the presentation lasted about two hours. Well, there was, there was a presentation and there was a question and answer, which lasted about thirty to forty-five minutes, I'd say. Presentation probably lasts in the neighborhood of an hour, maybe an hour fifteen, because it, it is choppy. It gets stopped and started again as people kind of want to, you know, ask questions in, in the middle before they get a little lost or they get a little too in-depth. Still in planning stages, so it is a great time for your ideas to be thrown out there and chewed up and discussed. The next building committee meeting is...
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, it's a special one, yeah.
And then our regular meeting will be the...
Typically the second Tuesday of every month. But for the next couple of weeks, we're having one almost every week as we have to, some hard dates to, to come on, that we've got to meet some deadlines. And that's the update on the building project.
Okay. Moving on to correspondence, we have the executive session minutes from December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. We have the minutes from January eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Comment on the January eighth meeting? On page two, the discussion on Soul Street and the Reclamation Pro, Project. I'd like to see that reworked. There's a lot of information that, well, not a lot. There's some information that was, was discussed and put out there that's not in that summary for one. The other was page four at the top, reviewing the fighter farm and grants. The town is required to come up with twenty-eight thousand in thirty days. There was, I think it should be listed in there, the total amount of the grants. There's, there's no mention in there about cooperation with, excuse me, with a couple of other towns. It should be, maybe before that is brought up for, for a vote next, next meeting, that, that should be corrected.
You got that, Denise?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no.
One more?
No.
All right, now we are on to finance director's time.
The only thing I have for you tonight is just, I've given you all the fiscal two thousand and nineteen budget requests. You will notice you do not have the summary of all of them compiled yet, just because I got the last two budgets last week. So to get everything printed, bound, and copied for you all, so at the next meeting, I'll start giving out the, the normal budget summary. In addition, starting next week, or next meeting, I will add on every agenda fiscal two thousand and nineteen budget discussions. So if you have questions as you go through it, if you guys feel you want to meet with anybody, please let me know, we'll start adding that. The finance committee's meeting has been postponed till next Wednesday. We had a quorum issue last week, so they did not meet. So they will get the budget books, they're going to start reviewing them on next Wednesday. So they will start pretty regularly meeting with all of the departments. But again, if this board has questions going through it, if you want to meet with anybody, you will have time on every agenda. And if there's anything that comes up in between, don't hesitate to ask me, and I can either let you know or add that or provide any additional information. That's all I have for you.
Okay. Now we're on to selectmen time, time to be used to make statements, propose future agenda items, or congratulate residents, teams on accomplishments. This time should not be used to initiate discussion. Bill, O'Neil, start over there.
I'll start here. Great. First matter, DIA program. Successfully off the ground in Bagnell. Congratulations to Chief Gillen, who was really spearheaded behind this project. Congratulations to him. Congratulations to Officer Doni, tremendous candidate, kids really admire him, he works well with them. Point of disappointment for me is I, I'm hearing through the grapevine is a lot of, I guess, criticism of the program. People feel it's a waste of time and funding. So I want to issue a challenge to those people that think it's a waste of time and funding. I'm here every other Monday, six-thirty usually, podium's usually open. If you've got a better idea, I'm all ears. If it's really a good idea, I'll find the funding for it. It's the best idea I have. If you've got a better one, like I said, I'm all ears, I'm here every other Monday, podium's always open first thing. Please come and share your thoughts with me. Love to hear them. You got a better solution, we all want to hear it. Second thing, office hours. Selectmen, Wattsman, I understand you, you hold office hours during the week. Is that true?
Well, I've been doing it once a month.
Once a month? Do you know when you'll be doing those?
I've been doing them the second Tuesday of the month.
Do you know what time you do those?
Been doing them ten to eleven.
Ten to eleven, okay. I would like to start my own office hours. Ten to eleven is great if you're retired, if you're not working, if you work odd shifts. Most of my constituents are, work like me, nine to five. So I'd like to propose office hours every other Saturday. For those of folks that work like I do, nine to five, Monday through Friday, to come out... through Friday, to come out, down and discuss anything you'd like to discuss. Bitch me out, cuss me out, if you've got nothing to bring.
Careful what you ask for.
I don't care, listen, I'll be down every other Saturday, starting on the day after Groundhog's Day, that's February 3rd, and...
Will you be holding them here?
I'll be holding them here. Well, I could hold them outside, but it's a little cold right now.
I'm just making sure.
Well, because no one will be here, so you have to get a key.
No, you have to get the key from the police station.
I'll get the key.
Yeah, okay.
And...
10 to 11? If you want to let me know, we'll put it on our website.
Yeah, the time may change, only because I have two sons that are extremely active, and I, I may appoint never to miss one of their activities. I, I think it's, it's something you don't get back if you miss it, so the times may adjust, but it'll be every other Saturday. Like I said, feel free to come down here and cuss me out. If you've got nothing to cuss me out, bring a deck of cards, I'm the second-best cribbage player I know. And that's about it. I'm good, thank you, sir.
Lisa?
I don't really have anything, but I wondered if the police department might be willing to share their curriculum around the DARE program, simply because I got an email from my older son's high school today about the incidence of vaping and juuling that's happening. It's become...
What was the second thing?
Juuling.
Can you tell me what juuling is?
So juuling is actually the main brand of a device. It looks like a USB.
Mm-hmm.
But it has flavored...
Yes, I've seen those, okay.
And they've become very popular, and a lot of people don't know what they are because they sort of look like USBs.
Yeah.
I know at my son's school, they've implemented a whole, they only had three bathrooms open versus like 15 or 20, because it's become such an epidemic of people vaping in the bathrooms.
Middle school or high school?
High school. But I don't, I know for certain, from talking to my other son, I know for certain from talking to my other son, that it's happening at the middle school, too, and I just think that it might not be a bad idea.
I will just say, though, the DARE program is only at Bagnell, because it's not a Penticat wide initiative, it's only a Groveland initiative at this point.
Okay.
Right.
Chief Gillen approached the superintendent about wanting to start it up, the other two communities at this point haven't. So technically, ours is a pilot program to see how it's working, so it's just based to elementary school kids.
So I can send him an email, I would just ask whether they're actually just talking about that, just as a, an education piece for the kids, because I think there's a lot of kids.
Yeah, and real quickly, Merrimack and West Newbury, what are you waiting for? What are you waiting for? These kids are dying, help them. I mean, this is costing nothing, really. What's the price of a life? Come on.
I'll set Lisa.
Get on board.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, going through the chair, I would like to ask for a couple new agenda items. One of them is, I would like to have a discussion on a new town manager or an administrator, so we could put that on for an agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
And I would like to also, I've heard rumored that the Finance Board's muddling around the idea of appointing the position for the Highway Foreman or Superintendent, however. I'd like to try and talk about that at one point, too, because we're coming into the budget season and what have you, so these are some things that we could get taken care of before we get deep into that.
Can I just ask a question about that? So in bringing both of those up, we'd be talking about whether we want to bring something to the town warrant, because I don't, I don't think we would be able to do anything with the current budget, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so if I may comment, so the Finance Board is pursuing making the Road Commissioner position appointed. I think because the meeting was canceled last week, I think that's on their discussion items for the next meeting. They are moving forward with that, so they will be submitting you an article request for this coming town warrant, that when the Road Commissioner's term expires in May of 2019, that position, or should he choose to leave sooner, that position would become appointed. So they are going to push that through to this board for this coming town meeting.
Do we have a sense of what the deadline is for the warrant for it?
So it's kind of been a moving target in the past. I usually do anything by the end of February, articles submitted, but we've had some extra flexibility, just because usually the state numbers aren't available, and we don't have final school numbers, so it really can be, I usually put it on for the board to close the warrants, like in early March.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll set that. Ed, anything?
Yes, just one. I know town government moves slow, sometimes at a snail's pace, but we're, we're 12 months on the fence over between Groveland Commons and the fire station property. 12 months, unacceptable. Something's got to be done. I know it doesn't meet the deductible for the town insurance, but it's an eyesore, and after 12 months, something ought to be done.
Well, if you have more pull than I do, I can't get the fence company to come out and give me a quote. I've tried.
Which company is it?
I've called, I've gone, the same company we had problems with, with Bagnell. I can't get them to come out.
I couldn't get them to come to my house either.
So that's been, that's been the holdup.
Is that a local company?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll, I'll ask them.
Okay.
Is that it?
No, that's all I got.
All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn at 8:05?
Motion to adjourn at 8:05?
Second.
All those in favor?
At least I heard you that time. No wonder they got a problem with your audio.
I don't know if it's just mine.
Boy, yours is off, that's a real problem.